Thank you, we'll get our meeting started here. They're with me, this is my first time, this is fun. Uh, we don't need to read all that, we're all back, it's all good to be back, happy to see everybody. Can we, Jamie, would you like to start us off with the indication?
Father, thank you for this day and night, ability and opportunity to meet together to conduct city business, give us wisdom, give us discernment, and be with all of those who are serving our country and those who are fighting for Ukraine.
My diligence to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Call to order. It's called, just call me, he's called to order, roll call. Councilmember Carden, here. Councilmember, remember, Ben Orman.
Here.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Person.
Councilmember Fuller, here. Councilmember Baird.
Here.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. Item number five regarding our agenda approval, I have one item to add for your consideration, which is a briefing from Liberty Lake Shore Water District to item eight under reports and inquiries, can I get a motion please?
Move to add a note from the district.
Thank you.
Second.
Pardon me?
Do you do approval? One more, can we take the vouchers added consent? For brief discussion?
Could we have discussions during the vouchers?
Yes, if it's in consent agenda, you don't.
Just move down. So you want, you want me to call it out individually, isn't it a motion anyways? To approve the consent agenda, so in a motion, we should have a discussion.
Yeah, general, general consent just intended not to have discussion, but. Please. Discussion.
So. So item eight, ten, eight, two. Down to action items.
So would it be entering six?
It'd be ten B. Miles will just put it at the top of the list, is that okay with everybody?
Can I get a clarification? Do we still have to approve the first motion?
Yes. Need to be a second with regard to her motion as well.
Right.
Okay.
So Wendy, is that, is that your motion and to move it down to the action items?
Uh, yes, move it down to action items and any place in that action items, whether it's, you've already got one through five, make it number six and you're good.
Uh, why don't we, can we put it at the top of the?
Sure.
Agenda item. So we'll make it before agenda item ten BI, how's that? Your second.
Second.
We have a motion to add Liberty Lake Shore Water District. Report to item eight and to move general business ten A two to ten B. Item number one.
Two separate, so two, two separate motions, it'll take yours first.
First motion, through water. Do we have a second on that? We did.
Yes.
All favor.
I.
Hi, on the second motion to move vouchers.
The second by.
Okay, all favor.
I.
Any post?
Can I make one more motion? Consistent with what we did in the last time, we had a council vacancy, which was about a month ago. I wanted to see if we can add public comments somewhere in the A block, one, two, three, or four, seems to me it would probably make the most sense. Maybe it's like a one point five before we go into executive session, but. Other ways.
I'm second.
So the motion is to add citizen comment as workshop, I had a discussion nine A, I point five. All favors, yeah?
I.
Any opposed?
Was it five or?
Uh, just after interview, interview applicants, so. And then mayor, sorry to jump in, who seconded that one?
I did, councilmember Baird.
Fantastic, thank you.
And for clarification, you say five though, because that would be after the.
I five.
One point five.
One point five. Yeah, nine AI or one point five.
Okay.
Right after we view. Alright. So we have a motion to approve the amended agenda, we have a second, thank you, all favor say I.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Citizen comments, I have two tweets here, first one is from Darren Asmus.
Uh, good afternoon, council members, I appreciate your guys' time this evening. I wanted to make a couple of comments regarding the Trailhead proposed capital project. Myself as an avid golfer, my family living here in Liberty Lake, we've enjoyed that facility for a number of years now. And when we look at that course, one word comes to mind when I talk to fellow golfers, fellow family members, uh, and citizens who play that course, and that word is opportunity. And when we look at what else is taking place within the golf industry and what I've seen and the information provided as far as current council member projects regarding that capital initiative, everything is moving towards and gravitating towards shorter courses, courses that are built around six holes, nine holes, twelve hole courses in some cases, and courses that are built around family friendly environments and bringing more kids to the game than have ever been, ever played the game before. Gary Player, one of the golf legends, has always, has been seen stating that that's the movement where golf is going to continue to move towards in the years to come. If we look at what's taking place within the industry with Tiger Woods investing in Popstroke and other well-known entities looking at fun, family-friendly environments such as Topgolf, that's the movement in the direction of the industry that's taking place. Myself, I've worked with US Kids Golf Foundation and looked at one of the opportunities that I feel like Trailhead could become. The US Kids Golf Foundation out in North Carolina, they purchased a course similar to what Trailhead is. It was a short course, it was struggling, they took it over. And in the, in the process of not only renovating that course and looking at opportunities, developed a teaching academy that now boasts over four hundred, four hundred individual juniors participating in their program on an annual basis in an area that's saturated with golf. I think when we look at Trailhead and the current investment and what's could be taking place, I would encourage the council members to really reconsider and look at a broader opportunity for what that course can be. When I've looked at what's taking place currently in the original proposals, there were some great ideas and concepts, things that would bring more revenue to that course, bring more participants to that course beyond just renovations to a clubhouse and to a driving range. I think everybody that would be out there would agree, both the driving range, the clubhouse and the parking lot all need help. I don't think that's ever in question, but the opportunity to bring more revenue to that course, bring more kids out onto that course and create a family-friendly environment for those to participate and truly enjoy is something that I feel like is really missing in this community. When families bring their kids out and they want to play, trying to get them out to Liberty Lake or Meadowwood Course here in our community is a daunting task. It's scary, you've got a kid who may be five, six, seven years old, maybe he's never swung a club in his life. Are you going to take him out there and have him feel intimidated or feel pressure from the group that's behind him? Or would you rather take him to a place where they can be, feel welcome and engaged and bringing them into the fold of what golf can be and could be? We always talk about, and you see all the comments about how many golf carts are driving around in Liberty Lake, how many kids are driving golf carts around in Liberty Lake where they should or should not. We know it's popular. And if there was an avenue to create a space for that to continue to flourish, I think it could set Liberty Lake up from a community standpoint for some tremendous opportunity in the future. You know, when you.
Sorry, I'm gonna have to interrupt, just three minutes is up.
Sorry, thank you very much.
Uh, then next up, we have Mark Sop.
This is good, because I just want to thank the council for finally approving everything for Trailhead. I mean, it was a daunting, it was a really a tough struggle to get through and I really, really commend you all for your efforts and, you know, making sure that it was done right, cross the Ts, dot the Is. Got a little frustrating, I'll be first to admit it, but it got done. And I'm really excited to see what's going to happen in the next, but hey, not enough compliments or atta boys are handed out. I'm giving one to everybody here, thank you very much.
Mayor, we do have one written comment that I would like to read in to the minutes as also, we received a written comment from R.C. Lavisore and Nancy Hill, city residents regarding Trailhead. And those comments were passed along to council. Okay, if there's no further citizen comments, hearing none, we'll move on, thank you. Hey Kyle, we have a proclamation, Autism Awareness Month. That is correct, so first I think we'll want to have a discussion of vote, second motion, and then we'll proceed with that. You want to announce the proclamation before we vote on? Apologies, yep, so proclamation is for declaring April designated Autism Awareness Month in the city of Liberty Lake.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Autism Awareness Month, all favor say I.
I.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes, okay Kyle, thank you. Excellent, so a proclamation of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, recognizing Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism spectrum disorder now affects one in sixty-eight children and whereas boys are nearly five times more likely than girls to be diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas autism spectrum disorder affects all nationalities, all creeds, all religions, all races, both sexes, it does not differentiate or affect only one group or another. And whereas there is currently no medical detection or cure for autism spectrum disorder. Whereas children and adults with autism have unique talents and abilities. And whereas autism spectrum disorder costs a family sixty thousand dollars a year on average. And whereas it is widely speculated that Albert Einstein, Isaac Newton, Andy Warhol, and Bill Gates are on the autism spectrum. And whereas thirty-five percent of young adults with autism spectrum disorder have not had a job or received postgraduate education after leaving high school. And whereas many people with autism spectrum disorder are successfully living and working and contributing to the well-being of others in their local communities. Whereas the city of Liberty Lake is home to autistic children and adults who are valuable members of our community. Perfect, thank you Kyle, therefore be it resolved that the month of April two thousand twenty-two be designated as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Liberty Lake, recognizing the unique talents and capabilities of our autistic friends, neighbors, and families, we support them all. Thank you. Next item, we have presentation on Hoop Fest, Hoop Town by Parks and Arts Commission. Is that correct?
Good evening, my name is Nancy Hill and I'm on the Parks and Arts Commission. The city of Liberty Lake and the Parks and Arts Commission is exploring a partnership with Hoop Town USA, Division of Spokane Hoop Fest. They create neighborhood basketball courts in the Spokane region to help build healthier communities. Hoop Town has helped to establish and/or redo courts in the city of Spokane and several outlying areas in the greater Spokane region. Last year, they finished their signature court in Riverfront Park, which has a full court mural. It's a beautifully done court and is truly a piece of public art. The Parks and Arts Commission believes this is an excellent opportunity for the city of Liberty Lake. A partnership between the city and Hoop Town affords us the opportunity to update an existing court while creating a unique piece of public art in the form of a court mural while promoting sports and healthy living in our community. The Parks and Arts Commission has identified the double court at Pavilion Park for this project. The court is already scheduled to be resurfaced in twenty twenty-three. The scope of the project is to resurface the double court at Pavilion, add a court mural, new plexiglass backboards and breakaway rims, creating a beautiful yet functional piece of art. Additionally, the project will open the door to future partnerships with Hoop Town USA to promote sports, including but not limited to youth clinics, youth and adult competitions, and other basketball-related opportunities for our residents. City of Liberty Lake staff and Hoop Town will assist in coordinating the logistics of the project. Today, we're joined by Connor Walsh, project and events manager for Spokane Hoop Fest. Connor will share with us a little more about Hoop Town USA and their community courts program. After his presentation, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Connor?
Thanks for the introduction Nancy and thanks to the council for allowing me to speak here tonight. So I wanted to share a little bit more about Hoop Fest, Hoop Town and our community courts program. First off, I wanted to share, if you want to go to that next slide, share a little bit about Hoop Town USA and what it is for those that don't know. So back in June of twenty nineteen, Hoop Fest launched this brand as, under the umbrella of the Hoop Fest organization called Hoop Town USA. We wanted to recognize the city of Spokane and the greater Spokane region as, as this basketball Mecca in the United States. With our launch, we received a one million dollar donation from MultiCare that had four initial initiatives as a part of that million dollars. And so that first, that first piece was, as Nancy mentioned, our signature courts inside Riverfront Park. And I'll, I'll show you a photo of that in a little bit here. We also received part of that funding to go towards resurfacing and painting murals and updating hoops throughout our different community court programs or program. And as well as launching Hoop Town USA Hall of Fame, which will, due to COVID, has been pushed back a little bit. So we're hoping to launch Hoop Fest this year. And then to also use those funds to brand the city of Spokane as Hoop Town USA. So you'll start to see some, some branding around the city, state, you know, DOT type branding that recognizes Hoop Fest at, or sorry, Hoop Fest, Spokane as Hoop Town USA. You can go to the next slide. Uh, so a little bit more about the, our community court program. So in the thirty-two years of Hoop Fest, as the organization, we've built thirty-five community courts, many of which in Spokane parks as well as surrounding areas like Reardon and Rosalia, Fairfield. We also have a net day every year where our board and staff and volunteers go out to all of those courts as well as other courts throughout the area to replace all the nets. We started that, the, the court enhancement project in twenty twenty that will do a couple courts, two courts each year for five years. And then we were able to utilize six of our courts in the spring of twenty twenty-one during the pandemic to do an outdoor leagues, as you see a photo of here. And then as well, we've been able to utilize our signature courts in Riverfront Park for an outdoor league in the summertime. Go to that next slide. Uh, so these are the first two courts that we renovated, so Chief Gary Park, Peace Valley Park, both Spokane parks. And then if you go to that next slide, uh, the, our signature courts there on the left, Franklin Park on the right. We also did Corbin Park and Thornton Murphy Park that I just don't have updated photos for yet. All of which have been hugely successful, the Riverfront Park courts were used constantly last year, last summer, all hours of the day, especially at night as, as it was warm during the day. Um, and then we have a plan for a couple more. This year, we've had partnerships with additional organizations, businesses that have been excited about the, our mural court pro, uh, program. Uh, this, this Franklin Park home was in partnership with the Spokane Tribe of Indians and the Spokane Indians baseball team. We're partnering with No Lie Brewery this, this summer to, to resurface Liberty Park in Spokane. And we're excited about the opportunity to partner with the city of Liberty Lake to, to continue this, this program and continue it throughout the greater Spokane region. Any, anyone?
Well, if there's no questions, the Parks and Arts Commission will continue to keep you updated on this awesome project. And hopefully we'll have a really fun piece of functional art in twenty twenty-three.
Great, thank you. Any comments?
Hey, I'm, I'm very grateful for the work of the Parks and Arts Commission and specifically the collaboration with another, yet another important entity in our, in our community. So collaboration is key, bringing forward great works in our community and thank you guys, great work.
Thank you. The other comments? Uh, just one comment for the council, if you could, be sure to speak into your speaker unless you have a loud voice like I do, you know, news. Thank you, okay, let's move on to reports and inquiries, let's start with Liberty Lake Shore Water District as we discussed it, our agenda change.
And I don't think any of them are on.
Do that later.
Moving right along.
No doubt.
Anything to report from city council?
I'll grab it. Um, so first and foremost, thanks and a shout out to all the volunteers who helped out on the Saturday, the fifth of March for the father-daughter dance. Nearly five hundred people actually joined us at the Riverboue Park Hotel. An amazing array of parents, I'm going to say dads and daughters of all ages, I'm going to say teenage through young toddler. Um, specifically, I want to shout out to the high school students from Ridgeline High School who also participated as volunteers. For these guys and girls to step forward and to give their time and putting that together was amazing. And I think a pretty good time was had by most, right Todd? Pretty good?
Alright.
Um, and let's see, then I'd shift and say, we did, yes, actually, we're able to serve lunch to everybody here on Thursday last week. And it was a great thing and I just want to say recapitulately, thanks to all the staff. I reflect on the actions and the time and the energy and the dedication. And I'm just very grateful for all the staff's contributions to every part of what we do, so.
Thank you. Any else? Councilmember Carden?
Uh, thank you very much, councilmember Fuller. I just want to thank the council for passing the proclamation on Autism Awareness Month. As the father of a special needs autistic kid, I asked if the mayor would bring this forward and I appreciate everyone's support on it, so thank you.
Any further? Moving right along. I'm not the mayor, so I don't have anything to report. Go ahead.
So I do have something on behalf of the mayor, she asked me to share this evening that she will be meeting with Kathy McMorris Rogers tomorrow on her trip and then next week she will be meeting with Senators Murray and Cantwell via a Zoom meeting. And she will update you on how those meetings go when she gets back.
Thank you. The minister's report?
Alright, thank you, Trevor Regan has an update on eco counters at the Centennial Trail, the Harvard Trailhead. Trevor?
Evening council. Todd, if you have that. Yep, perfect, so I just want to give you guys a brief, little update. The Friends of Centennial Trail and the Coordinating Council for Centennial Trail, they received a donation to install these eco counters. And we currently have one installed at the Harvard Trailhead location. It's just west of the parking lot, there's another one in the valley. And then we're working on, working with Washington State Parks, City Spokane, City Spokane Valley, Spokane County to get some more of these counters installed throughout the whole Spokane County section of the Centennial Trail. The goal for this is to be able to provide hard data to whoever it may be. We're, we're hoping to be able to push this out to the public because this can give, give them an idea of what section of the trail is being used the most by bicycles, by pedestrians. It breaks it down to, breaks it down to the time, it can give you an overview saying the, the peak season at the Harvard Trailhead portion is going to be between June and July. Uh, so a lot of, a lot of cool things that we can do with this. This, this counter does count bicycles and pedestrians separately. So Todd, if you scroll down just a little bit, I don't want to get too in-depth, but go down one more page there Todd. Back up to, I think. One more up if you can, sorry. It might not be on there. So great opportunity and then we plan to, the Coordinating Council and Friends of Centennial Trail, we plan to actually use this to help with maintenance of the trail. So if there's areas that are seeing a higher, higher traffic than others, then that's going to help with justification as to why these areas would receive some funding for replacement, for crack ceiling, whatever it may be. So, so pretty cool stuff that we're able to, to use on the Coordinating Council. And the goal is for the Friends of Centennial Trail to eventually have an app that the public can use and then we can actually push this information to the public. So one, um, one little idea that we kind of thought of was, you know, if, if a parent has a kid that's learning to ride a bike, if they're training a dog and they want them to get out in public, they can use this and find what sections of the trail are going to be. have the higher traffic areas, and at what times. People that are new to the area, they'll be able to pull it up, they'll be able to see, you know, the the section of Liberty Lake is X miles long. It seems like, you know, during the mornings and Saturdays, it's the higher traffic areas. So it's just some pretty cool information. And these counters, I mean, these can be installed anywhere. So possibility to track, track pedestrians and bicycles, I mean, at any sidewalk or any asphalt area. So pretty cool stuff. I just wanted to share that with you guys. That's what we're working on with the Coordinating Council of the Centennial Trail.
Trevor, can I throw a question?
Yep.
Hey, so the apparatus hasn't been installed yet, or has?
No, it has. Yes, it was installed last March, last March or April, it was a little bit late, last June, I believe. It was installed, so almost a year. So we've been counting, counting all that data for almost a year.
Gotcha. So without having visited, having visited the site yet, visually, what does that look like? What's the apparatus look like?
Todd, if you actually scroll down a little bit, there should be a screenshot that shows kind of where the asphalt is located, or the asphalt was cut. Might not show. So it's just west of, right when you hop on the trail, just west of the parking lot. And there's just a four by four post in the ground, and the counter is located underneath the asphalt. So there's kind of little diamond patterns that crews had to cut out to lay the wiring in the asphalt. There's not a trip hazard by any means, and actually, the company, they were praising us on the install. So our maintenance guys that worked, they did a really good job. Eco Counter actually asked if they could use our photo for training all over North America. So that was pretty cool. But it's all, it's all hidden. It's in a round irrigation valve box on the south side of the trail. So it's, there's, there's really no structure that you see. Vannels really don't know it's there. So it's, I mean, kind of vandal proof, but it's also bolted down, the lid is. So it's pretty safe and secure and very, very discreet.
Excellent. Thanks, Trev.
Yep.
All right. There are no other questions. Trevor is also going to provide an update on the residential sidewalk grinding program that's going on right now.
So baking concrete, just today, actually finished up the residential concrete grinding for us. So the list that we were given from residents who had lips within the two inch mark, we went through that whole list, and those have been complete. And now the next step is to work on all, any lips or concrete issues on city property. So we hope to get going on that by next week and be completed by, at least hopefully, beginning to middle of April. So and we, and we will, if we do get more requests, we will plan to do a second round of residential concrete grinding sometime in the fall, if we do get more requests.
Trevor, I was just going to mention, they were in our neighborhood bright and early this morning, and looked like they were doing a great job. So thank you.
Good.
So as a PSA, Trevor, when, if someone has a request for some grinding, how did they reach the city?
So they'll end up reaching out to, I mean, just contact the city, and then it'll either go to myself or Jen. Take down the address, the location of it will go out, make sure that it falls within the specs of the grinding, and then we'll add it to the list.
Right on. Thanks.
I have a question. So we have an action item later on in our agenda. How does this relate to that action item?
That's one of Lisa's projects, Mission Sidewalk Project. It's not related at all. Lisa?
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? All right. If not, Jandy has an update. Welcome back, Jandy, on library programming.
Good evening, Council. It's good to see you all. I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on what's been going on at the library. The beginning of March, we started doing all of our in-person programming again. We took a break in January and February. So we've started doing Storytime four days a week. This month, we've been doing a lot of crafts. So we've been doing some St. Patrick's Day crafts. And then later in the month, we have some art classes coming up. We're going to be doing a teen art journaling class. A community artist, Robin Smith, is going to be teaching that class. And then we're also going to be doing an adult watercolor class that Katie Frey and other local artists is going to be teaching to the adults. We're also starting our book loot boxes up again. These have been really popular with our tweens and teens. Each month, they get a box that has two surprise books in it that myself and another librarian curate, depending on their interests, and then it has crafts and snacks and activities. So that's been really popular. So we're going to do that again in the spring. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that the Library Board of Trustees is planning to do a workshop in April with you guys to update all of our new council members on everything that's happening at the library, where the library is at, and our community, community assessments. So watch for that. We're thinking the end of April. I think that's everything I had, unless anyone had any questions.
Great. Thank you, Jandy. Next up is Lisa on a traffic count update.
Yes, thank you, Jen. Councilmembers, many of you may have seen that we have traffic counters out on the Harvard Road Roundabout. That is a part of SRT's data project. They are collecting data to update their, the regional, regional travel demand model. It happens to be the only place in the city that's getting a count, in part because we've already provided them with the count data taken back in 2020 as part of our network analysis. So more to come as they collect the data and work to update the regional model. It's very much out of date, so we're very much looking forward to seeing that. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, Lisa. And events and reminders, it's, it's starting to get busy, and it's starting to actually look like a normal year, which I've said for the last couple of meetings, but this month, the month of April is really going to show. So Ridge Line Verity Loco is all month of March, and they've been advertising quite a lot on their Facebook page. Our first Skyhawks program starts April 14th. That's the little ones, the Supertots at Pavilion Park. Easter egg hunt is April 16th. The Spokane Valley Chamber Gem of the Valley is April 22nd. The Spring Cleanup Day that we do with Waste Management and Goodwill is April 23rd. And Lisa has a zone change hearing. Lisa, April 26th. MTC Zone Change Hearing. I believe so.
Yeah.
All right. If there aren't any, is she, you're muted. Are you trying to unmute, Lisa? Are you good? She's good. Thumbs up. Good.
Yeah, so if I may, yeah, so, so I just want to make sure everybody marks their calendars for the MTZ Zone Change Hearing on April 26th. We had to reschedule it, and so that is the next available date when both, when, when the applicant will be available. So again, it's, it's a special council meeting, but due to the length of the hearing, we want to make sure that we have enough time to get through the process. Thank you.
Yeah, a question, Lisa, on asserting an April 26th date, when should we try and, you know, establish that by vote?
Well, sooner rather than later. Again, in the first week of, in the first week of April, I will need to notice the hearing. So if that requires a vote of council to make certain that 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 date works, today would be the day to do it, I guess.
So, yeah, I mean, today's not too soon, then.
It's not too soon.
Mayor Protem, I would move that we assert April 26th, Tuesday, as a special council meeting date. Agenda to be heard is the MTZ Zone Change.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
All right. If there are no further questions, then that concludes my report.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving into our workshop discussion, item number nine A, filling in our council vacancy position, number six. So I think Jen has a list of who goes first. So I guess just for the council to reiterate, interviews, citizen comments, executive session, appointment, hopefully, in no ties, submit both of those.
What was the order we got here today?
I don't know. I was just pulling the names. Jen has it. So it'll be a surprise for me, too.
Is the plan still to go back into executive session if there is a tie by chance? Was that what we discussed?
Thought we'd just discuss it as a council and decide.
If we get there.
Hate this chair.
I was ready for you. I was going to help.
That's funny. That's been done.
Give that one to the mayor. It'd be a fun surprise.
Mayor Protem? I'm going to take a brief.
Okay. Do you have a list of who's? Or the podium? That's how I had to do it one time.
So are you ready?
Back in the day.
Back in the day. Who do we got?
Maybe give them a moment for Wendy.
Jen, just give us one second. One second. So first up is Jed. I don't know that I have the last name. You want them all now?
Yeah, sure.
Then Tom Silver. Dale. Robbins. Lena. And Jim Faulkner. Then Mike Behr.
And is there a time limit?
It was 10 minutes. Isn't that what we've done in the past? We had two minutes at the end.
For the count of six applicants, 10 sounds reasonable.
Wasn't it, Jen, wasn't it 10 minutes for the interview and then two minutes to wrap it up? So I was the timer last time, but we needed to, can Todd, can you be our timer for 10 minutes? Was that a yes from Todd back there?
Yeah.
Yes. Too much loud music when I was young.
Everybody's completed their interview forms. I will partake in it.
Todd, you ready?
Let's hear from Jed.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Lena.
Okay, Jed. We're here to start our interview process. First question.
Okay.
Describe your community involvement and/or experience that helped prepare you for this role and why you decided to apply.
I guess I would like to talk about a couple of things. First of all, is, as soon as I graduated from CV, about a month later, I went and served a mission for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints down in Panama City, Panama. So I was there for two years, basically doing community service. That's, that's what we do. So lots of, lots of service among the people. I learned to love people and love the people that I am surrounded by. So, and I learned the, the ability to be dedicated to a cause. You know, it, especially as a young person, you know, coming straight out of high school, the ability to go and and stick something out for that period of time, being away from home. Back then, it was, you know, send a letter home once a week. There was no FaceTime or anything like that. So a more, more recent example would be, I served on the board for the Spokane Regional Markham Association for three years as the finance chair. So I prepared budgets, you know, prepared all the financial documents and and participated in all the meetings and, you know, spent time with the membership. At NBS Promos, I deal with, the majority of my day is spent in sales and dealing with customers and vendors and problem solving. So I think combined with all these different experiences, I would make a good candidate for city council.
Thank you. And I probably failed to tell you, we have 10 minutes. We've used almost two of it.
Okay.
So I have eight questions.
Zippy, zippy.
So next question, name three qualities as a council member that should have, and name three qualities a council member should have, and how you demonstrate those qualities.
Three qualities. Well, I would say the ability to have curiosity, for one thing. You know, just drilling down, you know, even not being afraid to ask, you know, the dumb question, right? Because it's oftentimes that that question that will dig down to the root of a problem. I would say community engagement, the ability to engage with with people. And I've noticed that many of you have been very involved in in the Facebook groups that we have in our community and actually engaging with people and not being afraid to answer their questions and things. Being service oriented. The, the ability to, you know, give of your time and share of your talents and time, and and I think that's, those are good qualities. Did you say three?
That was three. Okay. Perfect. Question number three, are citizens adequately involved in the decision-making process? If yes, how so? If not, what would you do to bring more citizen engagement to the decision-making process?
Oh, that's a great question. I, I think, I love the fact that, that we've, we've got this community engagement commission started with the, with the goal to bring more citizens' voices to the table. I think, you know, giving people opportunities to speak here, but maybe, you know, even encouraging other, other ways to make commentary. I love the fact that we've, we've got the technology that allows people to do that in their homes. So I would say, yes, I think you guys are doing that, and perhaps there's a few other ways we could, we could look at.
Perfect. Question number four, can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government?
I believe the proper role of government is to protect citizens' rights. We all have inherent rights given to us from our creator, and we come together as a community to form a government. The, the things that we inherently have the right to do to protect our families and our properties, to come together to, to create infrastructure, those things that we couldn't do on our own, that we need to come together to, to build. I think that's the proper role of government.
Perfect. Doing good on time, by the way.
Thanks.
Question number five, how are you familiar with what is currently being planned and built within the city?
I, I mean, I'm, I feel like I'm pretty familiar, familiar, especially with this Trailhead project. But I'm loving the fact that we're, we've got more lanes over the freeway and more coming. At Henry, that's going to be a great way to connect. You know, I'm over in River District, and the ability to, you know, we've got a lot of members of our church that are on the other side over in Legacy Ridge, and the ability to zip straight across is going to be amazing, and, you know, just connecting our community more. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Next question. What do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns to the city and citizens, and how would you address those concerns?
I would say probably one of the top concerns, and what I've kind of been seeing through some of the, like the Nextdoor app and Facebook. A lot of people are really concerned about some of the, the safety issues in our city, particularly over in River District. You know, people want to feel safe, and, and to be honest, I still feel like Liberty Lake is one of the safest places you can be on this planet. But I think we can do better. I think beyond that, I think people have concerns about the managed growth with the building that's going on and the infrastructure. Um, I think beyond that, uh, I think people have concerns about, uh, the managed growth with, uh, the building that's going on and the infrastructure. Um, but, but overall, I think, I think the city's doing a pretty good job and I, I, I think, uh, I would just help keep moving that along. We're, we're basically, uh, two-thirds of the way for our max growth, right? As far as the population, um, but we're, we're halfway through that forty-year period. And so that managed growth, I think, is gonna be really important.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, next question, can you tell us how you think road construction should be funded within the city?
Well, that's an interesting, interesting question. Uh, I mean, I, I think it should be partially funded through, uh, through the building that's going on. Uh, you know, capturing some, some funds from the builders, uh, because they're, they're participating in that, that added growth and the, the extra, um, wear and tear on those roads. Um, and then, and then obviously through whatever means we're, we're bringing the funds in through, through taxation.
Okay, and then my last question, uh, why do you feel you're the best choice to represent the citizens of Liberty Lake?
I mean, I, I would probably be audacious to say I'm the best choice in, in the city. Uh, I mean, there are a lot of great people in the city. Um, I feel like I'm a great choice. Um, I'm, I'm a young guy, I've got, uh, business experience. Um, I, I would be a great representative, uh, for over in the River District. Um, I have a young family, uh, I, I'm kind of the, the median, uh, citizen for Liberty Lake.
Okay, that's the last of my questions, are we, we're not allowing individual questions, or are we?
No.
No, I think, did you wanna have, did you guys still wanna have a last comment? A little two-minute?
Two minutes.
So I will, so yeah, so I'll give you the remaining time, two minutes and thirty-five seconds to.
Beautiful.
Parting comments.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, my family moved out here to Liberty Lake, uh, when I was in second grade, grade in the late eighties. Uh, Liberty Lake looked very different back then. Uh, when we moved out here, there was basically nothing from where we lived on Valley Way, north up to Apple Way. It was all fields. So, uh, there's been massive growth since, since we moved out here. My parents started a small business in their home. They eventually bought the home next door when the, the people moved out and moved the business into there as they grew a little bit more. And eventually we grew, uh, to, uh, we've, we've got multiple suites over here on, on Apple Way. So we're continuing to grow and, uh, creating a multi-generational business, uh, family business. Uh, so that's exciting. Um, you know, I, I grew up, I learned to drive in Liberty Lake. I, you know, I went to CB and, uh, played golf on all the golf courses growing up. I, I got my first foray into, into business with my buddies selling, uh, used golf balls and snacks and, and treats to the golfers there at Liberty Lake Golf Course there on the corner of Multer and, and Valley Way. Uh, I got my first official job, uh, with Screen Tech out, out here on Apple Way. After serving my mission, I came, came back, uh, actually just, uh, less than two months before the city incorporated in two thousand and one. And, and of course now we're living here since, uh, twenty sixteen, uh, over in the River District and, and we, we love everything about Liberty Lake. Uh, I mean, in the wintertime since that, uh, Winter Glow Spectacular has been put up, I drive by there every night. It's just something I look forward to. Um, all the community events, one of the coolest things when, when we moved to River District is, and I'm not even sure who organized it, if it was the, with the HOA or with the city, but they blocked off all around Half Moon Park for a bike race. And they, you know, they started it off with little kids, they got to go around and then, uh, you know, some, some amateurs, and then they had kind of the pro racers and they had food vendors, and so there's just so many wonderful things. You've got the, uh, the parade at, at, uh, down, down by the, down by the lake. Um, and the fireworks, there's just so many wonderful things about this community and we, we love, I mean, it's in my blood. You know, when I was in Panama, I'd tell everybody about Liberty Lake, Lago de Libertad. So, you know, it's just, uh, th- this is who I am, and so I'd, I'd be honored to, to serve with, with you guys. And, uh, just in closing goes X.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Can't hear me? Oh. Can we turn up the volume a little bit?
Enunciate.
Okay, next up is, uh, Tom Solberg. Hi, Tom.
How are you?
Good. We have eight questions for you, ten minutes to complete, two minutes for a, uh, final comments.
All right.
So shall we begin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Describe your community involvement and experience that helped prepare you for this role and why you decided to apply.
All right, um, I have been involved in public service for over forty years. I was the Spokane Police Department for twenty-six years. I moved to the Spokane County Prosecutor's Office Victim Witness Program. I was appointed by the governor, two governors, to be on the state, um, indeterminate sentence review board, which is the parole board. Um, in my retirement years, I moved here in two thousand and ten and two thousand and seventeen was, uh, the last of my retirement. I've been involved in all of the Liberty Lake commissions, I won't mention them, so we'll be short. Uh, Friends of Pavilion Park, Friends of the Library. Currently I serve on the, um, Spokane Regional Transportation Council, Transportation Advisory Committee. Was past member of the Spokane, uh, Regional Law and Justice Commission, so I've been involved in other volunteer things too.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, name three qualities a council member should have and how you demonstrate those qualities.
Okay, uh, number one, in terms of, uh, qualities that I would think you need to have, uh, is that you support your team. No matter what you have, um, going for you, you don't have anything if you don't have teamwork. I would say, um, building bridges and not walls. Uh, it'd be the second, and by that I mean, the community engagement piece where we're constantly having a flow of information, uh, both ways, uh, from the citizens to the government. And I think, uh, probably one of two things, the buck stops here, and it's the job of the city council to, um, represent those citizens that voted for you. And the other one I'd say would be do the right thing. How do you do that? Uh, be present. Make sure that you, um, lead with affirmation, not with negative.
Perfect, thank you. Are citizens adequately involved in the decision-making process? If yes, how so? And if not, what would you do to bring more citizen engagement?
Been doing that for the last ten years, Phil. I, I, I really think that it's important to have more citizen engagement, and I do think that it is the responsibility of the government to reach the citizens. There are so many people that are here that are just, um, living. And, and they're not aware of where the resources are, and they don't really wanna get involved in petty politics. Um, so the other part of that is that you make it attractive by having the kind of things that the Parks and Arts Commission is doing as something that attracts quality people and people that wanna spend and invest their time on these.
Okay, next question. Can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government?
No. I'll tell you that I believe in a representative government, and I think that, uh, you have a quote in your MRSC manual that says essentially that it's the responsibility of the legislative branch, um, to represent people, with the exception of the, um, initiative process and referendums that the citizens will have a say in. And, uh, so in my view, the role of government is to represent those people that, uh, that even don't participate in the process.
Great, thank you. Next question, are you familiar with what is currently being planned and built within the city?
So you've seen this. All of you have seen this. I have all of the notes for the last year of every city council year that I've been involved, so that's been since about two thousand and fifteen. I am aware of and involved in almost all of the things that have gone on here. So, um, in terms of getting up to speed, I have been involved in the Trailhead Project, the library project. I've been currently talking to Lisa and our planning, uh, our new planner, um, for transportation, David, on creating a master plan for transportation, which I think is also a, a council priority. So the answer is yes. And I will continue to be involved whether you select me or not. That's just what I think is my responsibility.
Great, thank you. Next question, what do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns for the city and citizens, and how would you address those concerns?
So the top three concerns that I think that we, that we would, that we have going on right now are those that you have identified. I don't have any disagreement with the way the council is prioritized and set up strategic planning. I think that, uh, finishing, finishing what we started with the new high school and the Country Vista Corridor, which includes the, uh, Kramer Road Project. And then also, of course, the, the Trailhead. I, I would add that I believe that the library is due for an update, and that would be my third priority.
Hey, great, thank you. How we doing on time? We're good. Can you tell us how you think road construction should be funded within the city?
I think that we need to use stiff lift and rate. Um, and I do think that you don't have to explain this to me. I think that, um, as we did with, with Parks and Arts, the more that we can find state and, and federal monies to help us, that's why I'm on the Spokane Regional Transportation Council right now. There's three point nine million dollars that are earmarked for things like our sidewalk and our transportation needs here, especially with regard to bicycling and pedestrian safety. And the more of that that we can do, the better off we are. Um, because those monies are there, we just need to get our hands on them.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, last question, why do you feel you're the best choice to represent the citizens of Liberty Lake?
That's up to you to decide that, Phil, and I'm not gonna toot my own horn, but I will say this, I'm informed and involved. Um, I will be regardless of whether or not you guys, uh, want me to be a part of this. Um, I think that I know each one of you, I have worked with all of you at some point. Um, no matter, even Chris and I, uh, who, the only time we've been able to really talk, uh, was once, uh, in person, but, um, we get along, I'm respectful and respected. I think that I'm inclusive and open-minded, and my whole goal is connecting people. And that includes, uh, the community engagement piece. Whether or not it works, my job is always to work myself out of a job and have someone, uh, make it better for the next person that comes along.
Great. And you have three minutes to give us your final comments, if you'd like. As you would like.
Well, what you see is what you get with me, and, um, I, all of you know me, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go on about that. I don't have an agenda, and I believe that you have done an excellent job. I've been a part of every budget process for the last six years, and the setting of strategic plan and, and capital, uh, projects. I think that if you wanna have continuity, if you wanna have someone that can hit the ground running, um, I'll, I'll be that person. If you wanna have new blood, then I'm also amenable to, to working with new people as well. And I will be here to continue those, those goals of mine, um, which include supporting city staff, uh, being inclusive, and, um, I was a police officer and it's a calling to serve and protect.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Appreciate it, Tom.
I knew you'd do it short, and I, you knew I'd keep it short. Thank you, guys.
Next up is Dale Robbins. Hi Dale, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We have ten minutes to, uh, ask you eight questions and a two-minute final rebuttal, uh, at the end, if you'd like.
Okay.
Perfect, so we'll start off, Todd, you ready? Yep. Uh, first question, describe your community involvement and or experience that helped prepare you for this role and why you decided to apply.
Um, I've done a variety of things in, in the community over the years. I, I went through the whole, the whole scouting program. I'm an Eagle Scout, and so I've been involved in scouting. In my, in my hometown, um, I was also the past president of the Knights Columbus, and we sponsored the oldest Boy Scout troop and Girl Scout troop for special needs kids. That was really a special time. I, I, I don't know how else to say it, because I know you're not supposed to talk about religion, but I taught Sunday School, and I'll just leave it at that. You know? I, I do, I do a lot of legal pro bono work, um, in a variety of areas. Education, uh, disability, um, some domestic, domestic, uh, issues, which I try to avoid and pawn that up onto somebody that has the expertise. I've been involved i- in Habitat for Humanity. And that was, that was a great experience. And, and if you've never done it, just go do it even for a few hours. Uh, you will never get the experience, and I got to do it with my son. And it was just something that we both remember. Then most recently, since I saw you last, um, I've been on the planning committee. And, and that's been an eye-opening experience. I would be remiss, cause I've asked questions, and somebody always gets back to me almost immediately to get my question answered, and I just wanna say thank you to a variety of people.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, next question, name three qualities a council member should have and how you demonstrate those qualities.
I think, I think the, and this is what I've seen with the council, i- i- is that is when you disagree, it's not personal. And you, you, you set forth your case and the other person sets forth their case. And then, um, when the council, once, once that's over, then that's the council's position. And I was, I was in a, it was the strangest Board of Directors meeting I've, I've ever been involved in. And people would bang and, and swear, and, and, and it was just hostile. It was, Robert Schule's border were totally out the window, unlike here. But when the decision was made, it was like, what was the vote? Oh, it was unanimous. Didn't matter if we went down like this, when the deposition was made, uh, it was unanimous. The other thing I think critically important is to listen. Because, uh, we represent our community. It's not my opinion, not my agenda that I wanna put forth. It's the, the people that I talked to, and sometimes, um, they've changed my position. Because I have personally thought this, then I talked to the community members, and I'm like, oh, when I hear their side of the story, I've completely changed directions. So I think it's important to listen, I think it's important to, uh, to hear the other side out and to be respectful. And I've seen that time and time again in, in the last couple of months, with this organization, so, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next question, are citizens adequately involved in the decision-making process? And if yes, how so? And if not, what would you do to bring more citizen engagement to the process?
You know, we heard from, from, from speakers tonight, and I think that's great. Um, I really don't think that, that, that people are really aware. You know, it's like, I might read something in Splash. Um, and certainly with, with the Trailhead Project, I think people were acutely aware of that. But I think generally speaking, uh, I don't think people are as involved as, as, as they could be. And, and, uh, uh, you know, one of the things that I, I look for, I, I look for Chris's post today, you know? What's gonna be discussed? And I think that's one avenue. I would really kinda like to hear somebody else do the same thing. Maybe they have a different take on things, to get more people involved.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, next question, can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government? And we have four minutes left.
Okay, proper role of government. I'm gonna try and not give you a legal answer. So, um, I think that, 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 you know, the, the government. The, the government should be. Serving the people, not ruling the people. And I, I think that, I think that, that I see a lot of, of the ruling. As opposed to serving a- at, at all levels of government. And so that's the, I think that's the most important thing that the government should do is like back to listening. And listen to the people. What, what is their concern? As opposed to just going through the mechanics of the budget, which is critically important as well. But I just think. More community involvement. And hearing what the people have to say. I guess we've kind of addressed that in the last couple of points, but that's what I think.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Are you familiar with what is currently being planned and built within the city?
I am now. And I, and. I want you, I, I, I feel I need to qualify that. When I stood before you last time. I had no idea, other than what I'd read in Splash or seen on Facebook. No idea. And so I have, you know, a much better idea. Just, just knowledge of, of, of the areas of the city. You know, this map, people were looking at the map and I'm going. Man, I don't know what they're talking about, you know, because they were referring to areas. I had no clue. So since, since we met last time. I, I've spent a lot of time just putting out speed for my own education.
Okay, two minutes, three questions left.
Okay.
What do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns for the city and citizens? And how would you address those concerns?
Okay, I, I think. I think the crime rate's extremely pressing. And, and part of that is due to the, the changes in the legislature. I think, I think tha- the traffic and infrastructure i- is, is probably the second issue. And I, I think the, the, the third issue i- i- is what you're already working on is what's the best way to use Trailhead?
I'm gonna jump to the bottom question. Anybody having issues with that on council? Okay, next question. Why do you feel you're the best choice to represent the citizens of Liberty Lake? One minute, please.
All right. I guess. Just personally, I, I come at it from, from different standpoints. I'm a homeowner. I'm a business owner. I'm a lawyer. I'm a doctor. You know, in terms of, of, of recreation, I'm not a golfer. Imagine a doctor and lawyer who's not a golfer. Instead, my passion is I teach karate over at the mat. So you had, you had one more question, I believe.
I do. I'll give it to you. How, how would you tell us? Can you tell us how you think road construction should be funded within the city?
You know how I would like to see it funded? I, I worked for this judge. His name was John Arkush. And, and Judge Arkush came up with this idea. That said, you know, everybody drives. So let's, let's put. Car insurance as part of gasoline. Everybody's covered. The, we eliminate no insurance. And we contribute accordingly. So if I live farther out and I use more gas, then I should be paying more as opposed to just. To just my residence. I, I, and I really don't know how road construction is currently funded. But I also think that, that with all of the, the development, you know, with these heavy trucks. I think there should be some portion that goes back to the contractors. Because the roads are getting destroyed and they're the ones that are profiting. So I think they should have some skin in the game, if you will.
Perfect. Thank you. Since we went a little long, I'll give you a minute thirty to, for final comments. And I'll time it here, Todd.
All right. I, I, you've got a lot of candidates to interview tonight. I, I've at least had, this is the second opportunity I've had to speak to some of you. And I just want to say thank you. And I'll let it go with that.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I forgot to. Leave my tie on earlier today.
Okay. Are you doing all right? I'm great. Happy so far. Keep it up, Phil.
No complaints.
Stones being thrown this way yet, so. Okay, next up is Lena. Am I saying that right, Lena? Hello, hello?
Hello.
Okay, so we have ten minutes. I have eight questions.
Okay.
And I'll give you two minutes at the very end to, for your final comments.
Okay.
So we'll fire away. First question. Describe your community involvement and or experience that helped prepare you for this role and why you just, why you decided to apply?
Well, I am currently the chairperson for the Parks and Arts Commission here in Liberty Lake. I've been their chairperson for four years now. So I understand city processes. I understand a little bit about the council, so I think that would make for a smooth transition. I'm also involved on a lot of nonprofits within our community. I'm the Selkirk Middle School PTO president. I'm the PAC representative for Liberty Creek Elementary. I was also their president. I was on the Liberty Lake Rotary. And I'm a preschool teacher I hear in the community as well. So I just think I, I obviously have a passion for this community and, and serving others.
Great. Thank you. Next question. Name three qualities a council member should have and how you demonstrate those qualities.
I think a council member needs to be honest. I think they need to be a good listener. And I think they need to be accountable and hardworking. I think I, I try to be all those things. I think working every day with seventeen three year olds, I'm reminded to be a better person, to be a good listener, to be patient. And I think that most everything that I put my mind to and I sign up for, I show up, I do the work. I, I think I've missed two Parks and Arts Commission meetings the four years I've been on their commission. I'm, I'm ready to work for this community.
Great. Okay, thank you. Next question. We're doing great on time, by the way.
Okay, great.
Are citizens adequately involved in the decision making process? If yes, how so? If not, what would you do to bring more citizen engagement to the process?
I think there definitely could be more connection between the city and our citizens, especially as we grow. Those demographics are changing and I think a, a really big goal of this council should be connection. Reconnecting with, with everyone that's been kind of shut up for the last few years that maybe haven't. Had a chance to, you know, shake your hand, learn about what's going on in the city. I do think that there are some great strides being made. With the. Community Engagement Committee. That's a great start. I love Councilman Cargill's two minute takes and recaps of councils. That's a great way for the busy citizen to learn what's going on. So that they can understand what, what decisions are, are being faced in our community.
Hey, great. Next question. Can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government?
Wow. I think the proper role of government is to serve the constituents of, of that community. We have to listen to, to all the needs and wants and make decisions based on. The good of as, as many people in our community as we can. When we make a decision, we should be looking at as, as. Wide a group as we can for City of Liberty Lake.
Great. Thank you. Next question. Are you familiar, excuse me, are you familiar with what is currently being planned and built within the city?
Yes, I am. I think obviously the two big projects are the Kramer Overpass. I'm really excited about that one just because not only is it gonna. Ease. Give some ease to our citizens as far as infrastructure, but there's also some really great opportunities for public art. And green space, which is something I think that Liberty Lake prides itself on. So that's really exciting. And then Trailhead, obviously, there's great opportunity there. I served on that Master Plan Committee a few years ago. And I think there's a great opportunity for us to really look at what, what we can get for our community in this project.
Great. Thank you. Still doing really good on time. Next question. What do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns for the city and citizens? And how would you address those concerns?
I think the top three concerns in our city are probably also. Where our priorities lie, which is safety. That's a huge concern, but also I think should be a priority. Infrastructure. Also a huge concern as we grow. And I think growth in general is a concern. Are we able to accommodate the growth that's coming to Liberty Lake? Are we serving all of, all of. That in a way that we should be. Businesses, all of schools, all of it.
Okay, great. Next question. Can you tell us how you think road construction should be funded within the city?
Well, I think whenever possible, we should look outside of our city to grants, national. If there's opportunities for us to look outside of our own budgets, that's, that would be my first thought. And obviously, you know, infrastructure concerns are something that always have to be top of mind. It just, it just does. It's, it's gonna take precedence over other, other things at times because if we don't have those fundamentals. Then I don't think anyone's going to be happy with our community.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my final question is, why do you feel you are the best choice to represent the citizens of Liberty Lake?
That's a hard question. I think you've got some, some great options. I, I do. I think I have a passion for this community. I've proven that I'm, I'm willing to serve. I'm really to, willing to put the work in. I, I keep up to date on what's going on in the city. And I think all of those things would make it a very seamless transition for me. To the council. And so I think that's probably what I would say would be why I'm a better candidate.
And you have three minutes, if you'd like, to, for any final comments.
Okay, um. Well, I. I'm here not only, you know, as, as a citizen, but also I'm, I'm a mom. I work in Liberty Lake. I serve on nonprofits in Liberty Lake. I serve on a city commission currently. And I, I respect all of you. I admire the time and effort you put in to working for the city. And it would be an honor to, to sit alongside you and be part of your team. And that's really it.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Two left. Jim Ball. On to Jim. Wagner?
Uh, Bumper?
Bumper. Say again?
Hello?
Hi, Jim. Thanks, thanks for joining us. We have ten minutes. I have eight questions and we'll give you two minutes at the end for any closing comments. So my first question. Describe your community involvement and or experience that helped prepare you for this role and why you decided to apply.
Well, I'm applying for the position because I, I can help the council based upon my, my background. Former CPA. Had deep experience in virtually every aspect of financial affairs. Also, I was a chief financial officer for a variety of publicly traded companies and some private companies and a chief operating officer. At Vista Labs, AKA Rely On. And of course, I have the distinction of having traveled to Wuhan before the virus became. victorious. Anyway, so I've been on the salary commission, just recently started the planning commission, been volunteer work. As a fight to go. Volunteered as a primetime mentor, volunteered down at Catholic charities with a variety of events. And, and there's probably other volunteer activities that. Off the top of my head, I don't remember all of them.
Sure. Great. Thank you. Next question. Name three qualities a council member should have and how you demonstrate those qualities.
Well, I think communication is probably a important quality. And you demonstrate communication by being honest, telling the truth, telling people what's on your mind. And, and you shouldn't, you, you have to have trust and you have to have respect. Those are. Key qualities. And if you don't have the trust in the other people, it's, it's not gonna work out really well. I think I mentioned two, but that's, that's enough.
Perfect. Thank you. Next question. Are citizens adequately involved in the decision making process? And if yes, how so? If not, what would you do to bring more citizen engagement?
Well, I think the, the, the Citizen Engagement Committee is a, is a good start. But I think we have to be innovative and figure out ways to get more SIS involvement. I think there may be some brainstorming amongst the council members to figure that out, but anything we can do. Whether it's more town halls or more one on ones, we, we have to get more SIS involvement. And you, you have to kick the SIS. They're not gonna just, oh, I want to be involved. You have to. You have to sometimes drag them to get involved. I think it's absolutely necessary to get more SIS involvement. And as we grow. It's gonna be necessary to do a good job.
Great. Thank you. Next question. Can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government?
The proper role of government?
Can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government?
Well. People form governments in order to provide for the common good. Otherwise, you wouldn't have any government. You'd have anarchy.
True. Okay. Next question. Are you familiar with what is currently being planned and built within the city?
I've got a flavor for it. I've been involved in the Planning Commission, just started that. I've had two meetings and. I've got a pretty good sense for some of the projects, although I think really what I'd like to do is do a drive around with Lisa. She volunteered to do that. I'm not a voting member of the Planning Commission. I'm the, what do you call it? I'm a celebrant here? Oh, yeah. But I, I do need to get more involved in that. I think the way I would do that is grab ahold of Lisa, do a drive through, do a drive around and see all the projects. I'm a little bit familiar with the Trailhead thing, but yeah.
Great. Thank you. We're doing great on time too. Next question. What do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns for the city and citizens? And how would you address those concerns?
Well. From conversations I've had with the, even the, the folks in the, in the room back there is. We really need to have, I think, a, a community center, expanded library. And again, I think part of this is getting citizen input as far as what do you really want? Because I recall. Back in two thousand sixteen where fifty-six percent of the voters were willing to increase their property tax to have a aquatic center. Expanded library and expanded meeting rooms and then a community center. And of course, you need six, you needed sixty percent because of all the tax increases. But I think going back and looking at what those priorities are. And then making sure that whatever we construct is going to be adequate capacity for whatever we think the ultimate buildout's gonna be. In other words, don't build something that's gonna hold or be adequate. Or a population of twelve thousand when we're looking at being a population of, I don't know, twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand. So whatever we construct should be adequate based upon the projected growth.
Great. Thank you. Next, next question. Can you tell us how you think road construction should be funded within the city?
The. I really can't say. I think the, I'm not familiar with how the road construction is funded. I believe it's through state funds. I really can't say. I think the, I'm not familiar with how uh the road construction is uh funded. I believe it's through uh state funds. I know that Liberty, the city of Liberty Lake has contributed uh some money for certain projects. It's been kind of a mix between the city and the and the state. But I'd like to get uh most of it coming, obviously, from the state. There's a little from the city as we can afford. But I I know the whole thing with the with the Barker Road, a roundabouts, and how all that kind of worked its way through the uh the funding between how much was Liberty Lake and how much was gonna be City of Spokane Valley and how much has come from the state. So I would say as much as we can get from the state, that's what we should do. And we should press our representatives to get us money.
Okay, great. And my final question, uh, why do you feel you are the best choice to represent the citizens of Liberty Lake?
Well, um, I I have a different perspective, I think, than than a lot of folks because of my financial background. I will ask a lot of questions. I will challenge assumptions. I'll listen. I'm very analytical, and I like to think that I make my decisions based upon data. And I think that's critical. It's critical that as a council, that we have the citizen input, that we have the data so that we feel confident that we're making the right decisions.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
I'll give you the last two minutes and 40 seconds to any closing comments you might want to share with us. We have a dirty.
The only thing I would say is uh, you know, just just the time spent back in the room and talking to the uh to the candidates that you're talking to. Fascinating folks. Very, very interesting. Diverse backgrounds and uh honestly, I don't think you can go wrong with who you decide to choose, but uh in meeting those folks, I'm I'm very much interested to, no matter who you choose, I want to be still part of it in some way because it's really fascinating, some of the things that they have to fall. So.
Great. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
One more.
Good evening, council.
Hi, Mike. Um, so we have eight questions, 10 minutes. I'll give you two minutes at the end for closing comments. We'll fire away. You ready?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, describe your community involvement and or experience that helped prepare you for this role and why you decided to apply.
I've been involved in community all my life. Uh, just giving back constantly. I've joined the service, getting back to my country that way. I've uh in river cleanups, helping. I've been a soccer coach. I've done all types of community activities, being part of the community, and I enjoy being part of the community. What made me run for this, uh, not run, putting my, putting the application for was I've uh always had a passion for Liberty Lake. I just really want to be a part of uh city council and help Liberty Lake move forward in a positive manner.
Okay, great. Uh, next question. Name three qualities a council member should have and how you demonstrate those qualities.
Uh, definitely honesty, integrity, um compassion. You want to be able to relate to people and their their issues and listen to all sides. Just be a um common sense person to think of all the issues before making a decision.
Okay, great. Next question. Are citizens adequately involved in the decision-making process? If yes, how so? And if not, what would you do to bring more bring more citizen engagement to the decision-making process?
Yeah, I think citizens should definitely be involved in decision-making. They should definitely be um participating in all the workshops and council meetings and planning commission meetings as possible. First thing I would try to do is try to move the planning commission meetings to the evening, so more people have an opportunity to participate. You know, the majority of the cities in the area have meetings at 5:00, 5:30, and allow people to get home, grab something to eat, and come to the meetings. So I would probably do that, so allow for more participation.
Okay. Next question. Doing great on time, by the way. Can you tell us what you believe is the proper role of government?
The proper role of government is to ensure rights for everybody, to make sure everyone is treated equally and fairly, and make decisions based on that.
All right. Uh, next question. Are you familiar with what is currently being planned and built within the city?
For the most part. I've uh reviewed the conference of plan, the map, uh, I mean, been to a couple of meetings. I know about the trailhead operation that's being proposed. I understand the zoning ordinance. Familiar with the street road projects, the project going over 90, um, the schools that were built, all the other projects going on. I noticed you guys did the infrastructure. It was a pass, so I know the schedule of what's proposed to be built and the funding for that.
Okay, great. Uh, okay, next question. What do you believe are the top three most pressing concerns for the city and the citizens? And how would you address those concerns?
Uh, obviously, the traffic is a concern. Speed of the traffic is a concern. Uh, the way that the city is growing, a lot of people want to, celebrity like to stay a single-family type of community rather than high density. That's been a concern. And crime, you know, I want to make sure that stays down. It is low for this area, but I want to make sure it stays that way. We do that by making sure our police force is adequately funded and staffed, and make sure our workers are adequately funded and staffed here to make sure the city runs right. Right now, there's a you know, inflation's going up. We're gonna make sure our workers and staff here can live and work here. So let's just look at that, too.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next question. Doing great on time. Can you tell us how you think road construction should be funded within the city?
Through the state. That'd be my best answer, but yeah, road construction projects are complicated. You know, developers would be good if they could fund the majority of it during their projects. But I know certain aspects of that funding has to be, you know, specifically to their project and may not fund something somewhere else.
All right. And my last question is, why do you feel you are the best choice to represent the citizens of Liberty Lake?
Feel like I have um got a passion for this community. I really enjoy living here. Just love it here. So that's just about it.
And you have five minutes, if you so choose, for any final comments.
No final comments. Just uh appreciate your time and your my, your consideration.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sure. If anybody have any issues with that.
I I have one question. On one of the applications, it didn't say. I'd like to know that one. Is that a possibility of asking?
Sure. It's a requirement. So how do we get that answered?
What, I'm sorry, what was the question?
Just.
Question is, how long have you lived continuously in the city of Liberty Lake? And one of the applicants, it was missing.
Isn't, wasn't answered. That's the position of the candidate, I guess.
Why don't we do this? We can, we can, we can, we can address it when we go to exec session and find out. Okay.
If I, if I remember correctly, his his one when he applied in January, he did have it on there.
Did it?
Yeah.
So I'm probably gonna look at the last one and find out. Okay.
Okay. So bring him in. Thank you.
And since I wasn't privy to those, you know, I was the last one on the totem pole to get interviewed. I did not know that. Okay.
Years relative to years of voter. But to a certain extent, you'd have to be a resident in order to be a registered voter in the district. But we'll ask the question.
So uh, this time we'll ask for citizen comments. Todd, can everybody hear me okay? You have any complaints? All right, good. Just checking. So do we have any citizen comments?
David Heimbach, Parks Arts Commission.
Yes.
Okay, Tim Olson, please. Thank you. Say again? No comment from Tim Olson, okay?
Sounded like Mr. Heimbach was also asking.
Any other requests for citizen comments?
Yeah, this is David Heimbach.
Hi, David. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to uh uh commend all the choices that are being presented tonight. Um, I have worked with a few of them. Her commitment to the community uh and her willingness uh to do the right job and to finish what she started. So um, that's all I'd like to say tonight, and uh thanks for letting me speak.
Can you have him repeat?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Dave, uh, we we lost you about a third of the way through. Can you hit us one more time with that, please?
Is that better?
Yeah. Let's try it again.
So, yeah, my name is David Heimbach. I'm uh citizen here for Liberty Lake, uh Parks and Arts Commission co-chair. Um, I would like to throw in my recommendation uh for Lena Schutz, uh, who I serve with on the uh Parks and Arts Commission uh as chair and co-chair. She has great organizational skills. She has a passion for the community. Uh, and I believe that she will uh put forth a tremendous effort to get the, to get the job done of whatever that happens to be at the time. So hopefully you're able to hear that. Uh, I am driving, and I don't know if we come through, but let me know if you're able to pick that.
Yeah, we're good. Thank you very much. Are there any other citizen comments? Going once? Todd? Nada. All right. We'll close citizen comments, and we will uh, um.
How long do you guys want?
15?
15?
Yeah.
15 minutes for executive session?
So start at uh 7:42 uh for 15 minutes and be back uh in the council, no decision-making until after coming back council.
Thank you very much. For Thank you. Welcome back. Uh, so at this time, we'll open the floor for um nominations. Go ahead. Sorry.
I'd like to nominate Jed Spencer.
Second?
In a second. Any other nominations? Lindy, sorry?
I'd like to nominate Tom Salberg.
Second?
Any other nominations? Any?
I'd like to nominate Lena Sheets.
Second?
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed.
Sorry. Can, I I want to nominate Mike Bahard.
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. Um, just so everybody understands, um, each council council will, we will vote on each nomination in the order they were nominated. And each council member will get one vote only. At the end of the four, uh, we will, uh, whoever has the lowest amount of votes uh will uh fall off the list, and we'll start back at the top. Is that correct?
Right. So I I, just for clarification, is the the council's going to uh go through an elimination from four to three, three to two, and then work it way, work its way from there. So they'll all be able to vote for a candidate on each round until you get to the remaining two.
There, huh? Are we ready? So can we get a uh hands up for Jed Spencer? Thank you. Can we get hands up for Tom Salberg? Three? Hands up for Lena Schutz. Am I saying that right? Schutz. And hands up for Mike Bahary. So do we want to go to three, or you want to?
Right. So Mr. Bahary would would um uh be eliminated, and then now we go to the next round for voting the council members for the remaining three.
Okay. Next round, hands up for Jed Spencer. Hands up for Tom Salberg. Three. Hands up for Lena Schutz. One. Okay, so process of elimination, we're down to two. Jed Spencer and Tom Salberg. That correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, our last vote. Hands up for Jed Spencer. Hands up for Tom Salberg. Four. There we go. Tom Salberg, you're our guy. Congratulations. Jen, both of office right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Kyle is prepared.
Kyle's prepared.
Kyle, are you ready? Or Kelsey?
I actually have it. Can you guys hear me okay?
Tom, you want to come up to podium? Kelsey, can you see him? The podium?
I can now, yes.
Okay.
All right. Um, so Tom, if you would repeat after me, I and state your name.
I, Tom Salberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Washington.
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 And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
I don't think she can hear you.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City of Liberty Lake.
The Office of the City of Liberty Lake.
City Council, position six.
City Council, position six.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Due to the honor of explaining the term.
Oh, yes. Um, so uh, Mr. Salberg, your term will go until next uh the election in 2023, uh, at which time um the position will come up for election, whether you decide to run or not. Um, if you decide to run and were to prevail, you would continue in the position until uh the remainder of the term, which is another two years. Um, if there, if you chose not to run or were defeated at the election, um, your term would end after the certification of the election in 2023, and then there'd be another vacant. Then there'd be another vacancy for the remainder of the term.
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome. Can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
This was a really tough decision, and I hope everyone. I hope everyone who was not selected will serve on a city board or another city commission, because we could, we could use your, your expertise. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you for jumping in there.
And in years old time, we used to have a gauntlet. Gauntlet is all of us stand up and we shake your hands to welcome you to.
And can we take a break after that? Please?
Sure. All right, you want to take five?
Yeah.
So we back at eight twenty?
Be back at eight twenty.
Okay.
Didn't interrupt him this time.
All right, shall we commence? Perfect, let's move on to workshop discussion, item nine B, trailhead schedule, I'm assuming that's.
Good evening, council members, Todd, will you allow me to share my screen, please? Thank you for your patience, council members. So just wanted to give you a very quick update on what the schedule is looking like. Since we're moving forward with the programming and budget, as you've directed us at your last council meeting. So we're generally, in terms of the, of the building and site, we're looking at design and pre-construction. Really occurring between March and July. We are anticipating in early April to have the design team give you an update. At a city council meeting. And based upon the feedback we get from that, we will likely be scheduling a public open house, public presentation. In mid-April, in mid-April to late April. We are going to be working on, we are in fact already working on the design for the, the parking and the site improvements. And we hope that the design team will be. Wrapping that up by the end of March, looking at permitting and bidding in parallel with one another. So that by the beginning of May, we can be bringing back. A mini GMP for the parking and site for your approval, and that will allow us to get going on the construction. For that project, basically, in May and finishing it up by October this year. In terms of the, following that, we're going to be coming back for a design. And budget update presentation to City Council in. In. Late May, and we anticipate taking that design through. Building permitting and again, Bouton doing the bidding for that, so that they're able to bring back. A final GMP to council for both the building and final site. In early July, and then. Assuming that you were to approve that, construction would begin immediately, and we would anticipate the construction continuing on through May of 2023. And hold on a second, because my slide is not moving forward. Also, in parallel, we wanted to give you an update on the restaurant lease, so based upon the programming that you approved at your last meeting. There is now an RFP underway for the restaurant lease, this is being run by Goodell and Barbieri. And proposals are due on March thirtieth. We are hoping to convene an interview panel the first week in April to review the proposals and interview the potential restaurants. So, and I pause here for a second, because we are looking for some volunteers from City Council, we'd like to have up to three council members sit on that review panel. And I believe the mayor also is hoping to appoint a community member as well. Chris Johnston will also be sitting on that, as will Kyle and myself. And, and so anyhow, so that the intent is for the reviews and interviews to happen the first week in April. So that we can, basically, so, so a restaurateur is selected by the panel, and we can review the financials and finalize the lease agreement. To bring back to City Council. At the second meeting in April or the first meeting in May, depending upon how time, how much time it takes to get that lease agreement in place and to, and to vet the financials. And then, lastly, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the driving range poles and netting. So I have been in discussions with. With design professionals around the country, and I have to say that it's a very small pool of people, it's a very small community, the people that specialize in this. But basically, to have kind of a phased approach. We will need to go with metal poles. So that we have the ability to add on, based upon discussions with the professionals and discussions with. Risk management, clear risk. The recommendation is that we're going to go out for a design for eighty-foot poles on the city hall side and on the arboretum side. With the ability to add, to reassess the situation and to add twenty feet, to bring it to eighty, and potentially. I'm sorry, to bring it to a hundred and potentially another twenty feet to bring it to a hundred and twenty, if that's necessary. We suspect that we won't have to go to the full phasing of it, but we need to have that ability. According to clear risk, and then we're looking at sixty-foot poles on the golf side of the, of. The golf side of the driving range. So timeframe for this, we're hoping to have the RFQ out by the beginning of April. And by the end of April, to have that awarded, that may or may not come back to you, because the cost may, may or may not exceed five thousand dollars. So we're expecting a price roughly in the range of five to six thousand for the design, so obviously, if it's over five thousand, it will come back to City Council, otherwise, it will be a purchase order. Following that. Following the award in the beginning of May. We would assume that we're going to have a month and a half or so for the design and preparation of bid specs, that's a little soft right now. Because until we have somebody on board, I'm just really not sure how long that's going to take. And then, bidding the poles and netting is going to take a month. To do the bidding and then to review and get the contract awarded. So we're likely looking at the end of July before, at the earliest, before we can bring that back to you. We're assuming that this, that the poles are going to be a long lead item time, I don't know that for a fact. And so either, if we can get them ordered and delivered, we would expect installation to occur. In the end of this season. If not, we're probably looking at spring of, of 2023. So again, this is, this is the best information based upon what we have now. And I really just wanted to take a moment to share with you where we were at in the process for each of these elements. And I'd like to go back to the restaurant piece and see if we could get. If we could potentially get some council members who would be interested in serving on the selection panel for the restaurant. I'd be interested.
There's one.
I'd also be interested.
Councilman, we're done, two?
I too would be interested.
And Jamie, three?
Do you have a question for Lisa, that's. Lisa, we're still super early in the driving range pole and netting phase. Do we have any indication that we're going to exceed roughly the five hundred to nine hundred thousand dollar budget? So, and metal poles, so that's just why I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, so, so the eighty-foot on the city hall side and on the arboretum side with sixty feet on the golf side was at the upper end of that. So, again, we'll have to, we will have to wait and see, the one challenge that we have is when we do design, bid, build as opposed to the progressive design, is that we're a little bit. At the, at the. Discretion of the market, and so, so it may, we'll just have to see. We'll be able to, we'll be able to circle back with you, as soon as we know the answer, we can circle back on this, obviously. We have to go through the process.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you very much, Mayor Peres, I have three questions for you, Lisa, can, can you just explain a little bit more? Before we go to the restaurant one, the design part of the driving range, and what exactly will be designing there? I just would like a little more clarification.
So, so the, the, the poles and netting require a structural engineer, there is wind loading, and it depends upon the. So coming up with the poles that are going to support both the, the wind loading, but also because we're in a winter climate, we get ice and snow that, that can build up and take additional load from the netting. In talking to the designers, they, they did indicate that they can give us some options for what that looks like in terms of the poles and what netting that we choose, and that there may be some options to, to. Go with netting that is more of a breakaway netting. Which would reduce. The, the cost of the poles potentially, but would. Result in more maintenance cost over time, as opposed to heavier investment in the capital cost of the poles and whatnot, but would reduce maintenance in the future on the netting, so. My understanding is there's some options, and it depends upon both, it depends upon the netting, what those, what the structural analysis will require for the poles. And again, the poles also have to be designed, again, as we heard from risk management, they wanted to see. They wanted to see a progressive plan that would enable us to evaluate. The kind of. The kind of. Leakage that we're having, if you will, for balls over the netting, and to determine if we need to go to another phase. And so those are some of the considerations, but it does require a structural engineer.
Okay, second question is, and this relates to what's on the screen right now, talking about the finalized lease agreement. I think I heard you say that the construction wasn't going to be done until 2023, is that right, some, do you know the exact what, what we're aiming for?
Yes, and so if I can go back to the prior screen, I'll explain why that's important. So we are just constructing a shell, but having the restaurant. To, at the table early on helps us determine things like where the, where the, where the. Plumbing needs to be, we're not installing the restrooms, they'll be installing the restrooms, but we obviously have to plummet, that's part of the, that's part of the base infrastructure. Also, things like, something like the hood for a restaurant, again, that's part of the actual capital cost, it's, it's part of the building structure. So knowing where the kitchen's located, those sorts of things, and planning for where the entrances are. It also enables us to maybe engage a little bit more so that we can determine how best. That the flex space could interface with the restaurant to allow for potential for future events, that sort of thing. So, so that's the intent, is to get them to the table while we're still in the design process, and we're, as you can see from the, from the building schedule, this is a pretty aggressive design. Timeline.
Yeah, the reason why I brought that up is because I'm trying to determine, and maybe you can add some more flavor onto this. So if we agree to a contract or a lease with them, you know, let's say May or June, whatever time, you know, around that time. Will they be paying anything between then and the time that it opens, are we going to work that into the contract, or is? Is the contract not going to be valid, or the lease not going to be valid, or start until they actually open the business, is my question?
So I, I, I think that that's one of the things that needs to be negotiated, for, number one, there's a couple different ways that the restaurant could be constructed. One is that they could contract with Bouton as a separate contract to, to actually do the construction. The second option would be that they would bring in their own contractor, and they would have to coordinate with our Bouton team. And the third option is, because, because you generally don't want to have two contractors, two prime contractors. That, that sets the table for conflict. The third option is that we would build the shell, and then they would come in after the fact. So there's three different options, and that, that may weigh into the, the lease agreements, generally speaking, I don't believe that you're collecting rent. Until. The facility is occupiable. And again, that would be a question for Goodell and Barbieri, and they will be negotiating the lease agreement to bring back to you. But, but generally speaking, no, we would not be collecting rent before it was occupiable, and the reality is. Given the nature of this, given that we had, that you won't have yet approved the GMP, and we may not. We don't know necessarily that you're moving forward with the project in this timeline, that you're going to continue on the progressive. Design build process, I would suspect that there would need to be a contingency in there, should we not move forward with that, and I think that. I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a big deal, but I think that we would want to make certain that that language was included in there.
Okay, thank you, and just one, a quick clarification on the timeline, you said GMP by the roughly mid to end of July, did I hear that correctly?
That is, right now, that is, that is our intent to have the final GMP, and that's for both the building and the site, we'll have an early GMP for the parking and site and. To get that going, and regardless, even if you didn't do the trailhead project, if you looked at. That, if you looked at our asset management program, redoing the parking lot was a critical, was a critical item that needed to be addressed as part of trailhead, so even if we didn't build. The new. The new clubhouse, we're still required, we still need to replace that parking lot, because it's at the end of its useful life.
Right, I just want to, I, I just want to remember back to our previous meetings, when we talked about the fact that we needed to, to move on this and get everything in place so that we could start construction ASAP before the spring or summer got out, and it's looking like now it's going to be, what, first week of August, maybe?
Yeah, so that would be, that, that would be the, that would be the soonest that we, end of July is potential, but again, we have to get through the design. We have to get through the design and permitting process and bidding process to get there. And that's, so we, so we did through the course of discussions. We lost a little time, again, this is a, a super aggressive schedule at this point for us to. To get it across the finish line and the team's very much committed. To delivering for you. On this schedule to the best of their ability.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I, I wanted to ask a little stuff on the lease. From the standpoint of the lease, there's multiple factors that come into play, but. To answer your question and standpoint, would there be a lease agreement in play? Yes, the answer to that is generally yes. That's a byproduct of a number of factors, one. With just a shell, you could have anywhere from eight to twelve months lead time for equipment. Construction, whether that, as Lisa said, is with the contractor that's doing the work for the city or additional contractors, so. And that lease. What the terms are going to be a byproduct of lease term. If there's tenant improvements a part of that. What the rent will be, but at some point. Prior to occupancy, there may or may not be rent. That's all a negotiable aspect of what will come to the city and how the type of restaurant that's going to go in there, what the plan is. So from that standpoint. The city doesn't want to. Have a contract in place, spend money to do something for a tenant and then there's not a legal document that says this is what the circumstances are. So, once that circumstance comes into play. Agreement will come back before the council and says these are the terms and conditions and this is what will happen and in that way there's. Dependence not only from the city to the tenant, but from the tenant to the city, knowing that they're going to put a restaurant in. They can go spend money on equipment, knowing that they're going to have a space for that lease.
Thank you, any other questions? I have a last, one last question, anybody else have anything else? Lisa, my question is on the metal poles. And I get the eighty foot. Get being able to add on to them down the road. I get the arboretum side. The discussions we've had in the past, I was led to believe that if we do steal poles, we don't need as many. So they could be spread a little bit further apart than what they currently are. Is that a correct statement?
That is potentially a correct statement and that's what we need the structural engineers to look at and again, that, the part of that depends upon, again, the netting. And so, and the, so, so again, it's. As I've talked to people and I do have three names that we can, that we would. Include on this RFQ and they will actually. Present us with some options in that design. And so that is something that, again, it depends on the type of netting they use. As well as the, as well as the ultimate design of it, so, but yes, you are correct that with the metal poles. The potential is that we would have a lesser number.
And then my second thought is, if you could entertain in your thought process. We're going to have perfectly good poles that were up against city hall side. Is, is there anything that keeps us from using those on the golf course side?
So we could potentially use those on the golf course side. But they don't have the ability, we wouldn't have the ability to necessarily add on to them. So if the, the cost of removal and replacing them on the other side. If we had to add to them, it would be a more costly. Solution than if, if we are, if we're able to stay at the, what is now fifty feet, forty-five feet or whatever.
Understood, I just, that's been the least amount of our discussions for liability is the golf course side, it is a golf course. So balls are going all over all, whatever direction, so if we could. If we can keep on it and if we can reuse what's there, that would be great, that's all I'm saying.
That will certainly be one of the questions, that'll be certainly one of the questions for the designer and again. Again, it's ultimately, it's got to have a structural engineer stamp, so they're going to have to be able to tell us that that's doable.
Thank you, any other questions for Lisa? Hearing none, we'll move right along.
Thank you.
Lisa. Ordinance number ninety-six A amendments to the solicitors license regulations.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. I've prepared a draft ordinance for you all and I wanted to explain a little bit about what prompted the changes, so. In learning my role as city clerk, I have learned the process for. Reviewing and issuing solicitors licenses, which. Based on the ordinance, which was created, I believe, when we first incorporated as a city. The process was for the chief of police to run a criminal background check. Chief Simmons brought it to my attention that there's legal restrictions on doing that through PD's system and so he's recommended some. Changes to the ordinance. And so that's what's proposed here. Primarily, what he has suggested is doing a criminal investigation or background check through WSP Watch, which is something that. Citizens or businesses can access and run those background checks, so that would be something that I would be able to do. I've made a couple amendments, suggested amendments in the ordinance to reflect that so that. I would lead that investigation, but certainly in consultation with the chief, so if anything came up on that. Criminal background check, I would have him review it and give the final okay to release that license. And that would be a check through the state of Washington. The other thing I added in there while we're cleaning it up is just to confirm that the business applying for this solicitor's license. Has that Liberty Lake endorsement on their business license.
Great, Kelsey, I got a question. While we have this ordinance ninety-six A open, do you account if there's anything in there about like. Turn time or service level agreement for how long it takes to obtain a solicitor's license?
Specifically in the ordinance. I would have to read through it on our application form itself, it states that it's a five to seven business day turnaround.
Cool, all right, I'm just looking for what we have, making sure that we had at least identified what we think a turn time should be, thanks.
Kelsey, while we're considering this change, I. It's actually interesting that this ordinance came up because there's been a lot of. Question about. How to report potential violations and just for. PSA, if citizens have a concern about someone in their neighborhood who. May or may not be authorized, what should their course of action be instead of commenting on a Facebook page?
They can certainly reach out to City Hall during business hours. We keep a list of active licenses on our website. So they can also check there, but they can call City Hall and check with Tate or myself. I believe off hours, they might be able to call PD, but maybe Chief Simmons could. Touch on that if that's an option.
Thank you. Yeah, I think if it's non-criminal, I think just waiting until business hours to contact City Hall would probably be more appropriate, but. One of the things I want to stress is if there's anything that you believe is criminal. Please call nine-one-one, don't call, don't try to call the PD, call nine-one-one. If you think it's criminal or if it's reportable through crime check, you can also call crime check. But sometimes calling the PD. It takes a little longer for us to dispatch officers to potential, potential criminal activity, so calling nine-one-one, I'll call a crime check, those are the two best options.
Thank you, G.
You had to follow up on what the chief said. We had some criminal activity that was with some aggressive solicitors. And Liberty Lake Police as always. Was very responsive, it would have been a trespassing and a disorderly conduct, they charged. Two officers it took to get the guy out of the neighborhood, did not have a license. I chased him all the way down to the corner where he was trying to run and find his. His getaway vehicle, but it was after hours. And so the first call that we made was to crime check, wasn't an emergency chief, so. And they took good care of it.
Thanks, Tom.
Chief, one, one question for you, specifically regarding section seven. I'm wondering if that needs to be updated and I'm specifically looking at. The times later in the day, this is about hours in which it is allowed. Obviously, the most frightful thing for someone who's perhaps home alone or a kid. Especially when it's dark outside is when the doorbell rings or somebody knocks on the door. And so I'm just wondering, and I don't have the answer to this question, if we ought to change that six PM to maybe five PM. October first through April thirtieth, since it seems to get dark between three-thirty and four in the, in the winter. So just something to think about.
And we can definitely take a look at that. Consider that.
Go ahead, I got something, if anyone else is done.
I, I just have one, one, one to ask of the document. The, Kelsey, you said you made some changes to this document that's in our agenda. If, can you send that to the council with red line changes so they're easily identified?
Yes, and I apologize about that, that's a quirk I learned about Granicus fiscal round, I uploaded a red line and when I converted to the packet, it. Removed that, so I'll email that out to you guys all shortly.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Protem, so that was one thing I was going to address because I noticed that myself was. There wasn't any red lines, but the, the red lines are just in sections three and four. To the extent that Councilmember Cargill and the council wants to section seven, so. You have the whole ordinance in front of you, it's possible, and I've had this conversation with Kelsey, we wanted you. The council be able to see the ordinance in entirety, but what you may, may come back to the council is simply just those sections. In ninety-six A and not the whole ordinance. So you'll just be revising. A portion of ninety-six and so that it's not the whole ordinance again in ninety-six A and repealing ninety-six, so. If it comes back in a different format, that's why I just wanted everyone to be aware and wondering why the whole ordinance isn't there again.
Any other questions? All right, Kelsey, thank you, chief, thanks a lot.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving right along, general business. Item ten A, I can make the motion myself, right?
I can.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item A one. Approving the March first, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda item A two is going to be moved down to action items, we'll take that up under that category. As per our amended agenda. So moving on to general business, action items. I'll make a motion to approve the March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two vouchers. February payroll and benefits, March third, twenty-twenty-two manual payroll and benefits in the amount of one million, six oh one, eight thirty-one and twenty-six pennies.
Second.
Discussion.
Would this be inside of the same vouchers that I asked to be moved down?
Correct.
Okay. Discussions on that one. Looking at our vouchers and what we have in it. Of course, all of us are pretty aware of public disclosure commission and we're all having to. Put that in by April fifteenth. One of them is not over fifty dollars. I'm seeing, and I was quite surprised, I'm old school. And our first ten years of doing city. Business was located in state of Washington. I was quite surprised to see the League of Cities. And payment for that to be in. Those vouchers. Normally, those would be paid for out of the person's. Own pocket, the only thing that would be paid for, for the League of Cities would be possibly. The identity itself. Set signing up for. The classes. But for them to get there, for them to have their own. Bed and breakfast, whatever, would be on them. That's one of the things on the vouchers, the other thing I think. Was clarified, but I'd really like our finance director to weigh in. And that is, I'm seeing that we've got lots of computers up again. On vouchers. And I'd like him to be able to explain that, that kind of would clarify for the rest of us. Why we have so many. New computers on there, not just a way of, okay, we've got a surplus inside of our budget for last year, let's spend it. Do you mind?
Certainly. So, yeah, I'll expand a little bit and I can expand a little bit on both to provide some clarification for council, but. First off, when we're talking computers and we're, and we're seeing, you know, acquisition of, of these laptops on a fairly regular basis. What happened was, you know, at the start of the pandemic. We were operating mostly on desktops. And so, yeah, as everybody knows, you know, a, a piece of IT equipment has a useful life to it. And that's generally around five years for laptop or desktop computer. And so what the city has been doing is implementing a rotation. For replacement of, of computers and then computer parts. But in addition to that. We've had to change out all of those desktops and so that has been a, a pretty constant. Line item on vouchers that, that council has seen. Changing, changing those out and getting to a more, you know, what. What the federal government wanted to see is a hybrid or remote work capability. And so as. As existing laptops are ending their useful life or we're switching those out. For example, so on your vouchers tonight, we do have, we have a replacement laptop for the Proten. And we also have a replacement laptop for Tate. That is switching, she's one of the last ones that still has desktop. Switching hers out for, for a laptop.
Okay. So the only question that I would have is PDC. And I'm not sure because I haven't been here for, you know, a good ten years, if that was passed by council to change that. Because the financial policies before did not have that included in there. So I really believe that those. At least the areas of. Travel and if there's any which I didn't see, I was glancing at it. For bed and breakfast or wherever they're staying, that should be on them.
And so I, I can't necessarily speak to that, sorry, I'll, I'll jump in. So when the, when our annual budgets are passed at, at some point, and I can take a look back at when. When we noticed these changes, when this happened. So for twenty-twenty-two, we have allotted seven thousand dollars for. Training and travel for executive and so that's identified as the mayor and the city administrator. With fourteen thousand dollars budgeted for training and travel for council. And so I will, I'll certainly, I, I can be happy to try to shine some more light on this. For council, I guess, review and consideration. On how or when we, when we saw this trend. Start to, start to take shape that, that you guys are seeing now with. With our training and travel budgets.
Not, not to go ahead and point out or, or to put that aside, but if there's a way that we can take those vouchers out for this time. Talk about it during council meetings, figure out where it came from. And as long as it's passed by this council, I have no issue. Well, I do, but that's my problem. Only because I never got a chance to go, so therefore. I just really think that we should be, again, very transparent. We need to give more than what we get from. So never want. Anyone to think that a council member or a mayor. Is taking on this so we can travel the world. There you go.
So I just, Kyle grateful to recognize we do have a budget line reflecting travel. Supporting distinctly the role mayor and distinctly the role council member, right?
Correct.
And in the case study, the expense in the voucher is consistent with the city's policy for travel?
Yes, to my understanding, it is.
Yeah. So I recognize we budget for this purpose and to discuss the utility of it. Is part of a budgeting process, to discuss the compliance of it is part of a policy. And I think as long as we have both those in place, I'm good.
What's the amount?
I, I believe you'd have to go back down, I believe it's like. Close to two thousand.
Yeah.
So the, so the registration for the conference was one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. And the flight was three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So of that normally, at least in my past, it would have been just for the conference that the city would have paid for.
And, sorry, I, just in my memory, which could be faulty, I'll admit. I do recall prior mayors traveling for city business to Olympia, to. Other places, is that a different category than say a conference?
Normally, it would have been a conference or in the state of Washington, not necessarily where it in Washington DC.
I see. So it's more so because it's outside of the state of Washington, that's the cause of concern. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, a couple comments. There were certainly several instances. Mayor Pro Tem, a couple of comments. There were certainly several instances prior to Kyle's arrival where the financial policies were updated. To the extent that they addressed this, I don't recall off the top of my head, but certainly there were revisions to the policies on several occasions. There were also conversations with councils previously as it relates to creating a budget for the council members and training, travel, what have you. Over the course of the, I'll call it the last handful of years. I don't remember exactly. Kyle can probably look on the previous budgets when that occurred, but that was also dialogue that occurred and then including, if my recollection serves me, including a budgeted amount for that purpose. So to the extent that that is what you're talking about, I know those instances may may not apply, but I at least wanted to get that out there in case that's what you're discussing.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Quick question, Kyle. I'm wondering if you can explain to me, I'm sure there's a good reason for it, that we have six different Zoom charges from February for for the same amount, fourteen ninety-nine. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, so when you have a Zoom license, that authorizes an individual to create and be the host of meetings.
Right.
And so we have, so Todd has a license, Jen has a license, and I believe Lisa has a license. Our HR manager Heidi has a license. We have these licenses that are that are charged in a monthly fee for the ability to to host Zoom services.
Right, so it's, it's, it doesn't appear just as one, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, that's why I was trying to confirm, because at our business, it does appear just as one, and then we have up to a certain amount of people who can be managers of the account or whatever you call it. My other question was, I guess this isn't really a question, but more of an observation. It looks like we spend about four hundred a month at the golf course for DirecTV and then the internet phone. Have we ever taken a look at trying to get a better deal for that?
We certainly can, and I can follow up with our with our pro Chris on any shopping that has been done recently or any outreach to our current vendors to to negotiate a better price.
Yeah, I, I, I think both of those, especially the DirecTV one, we could, we could probably bring down a little bit. Thank you.
So I have two questions. We have a motion on the floor for the second. Trying to in my mind, figure out how we can move forward with you, with Wendy's comment. Do you have any recommendations on how we can move forward with our, this voucher, the motion?
Well, I guess it would be a formal one of taking those two vouchers out and having them resubmitted to come back at our next council meeting.
Are there any issues with doing that?
So she's yeah, so from this standpoint, she'd have to make a motion to take those two out. Have to be a second, a vote on that, and a passage of that in order to have that occur, since there's already a motion on the floor with regard to approval of all of the of the vouchers with those included.
So we can make an amendment to the dollar.
I would say it would be easier to take the vouchers out so that's clear as to far as what what's there.
Okay. I just want to be able to move forward here.
Yeah, no, that's right.
And one thing, if I may.
Yes, please.
Just something for consideration, not advocating, advocating either way. There may, we may be subject, since these were purchased on a city credit card, we may be subject to interest charges if they are not paid in a timely manner.
How hard is it to unring this bell at a later date for the that amount? If we prove it tonight as it stands?
What is, what is your credit card due?
Let me, I can take a look at that real quick. I believe well, I shouldn't say I have to research that, and I don't have that off the top of my head, but you know, the interest is going to be very small. We pay these off every single month. So i- if that's the case, I, I suppose I wouldn't let that derail this conversation.
So
It does need a second.
So Wendy, for clarification, do you want to make the motion relative to the one, the vouchers that you're identifying specifically so that there could be a second, if there is going to be a second?
Yes, and I do not have that page thirty-six of our agenda. So do you have the direct?
It's five, one, three, ten, forty-nine hundred.
And then three. So those two identified.
So can I hear that motion again, please, for the record?
Two, two vouchers with those two numbers, fifty-one, ten, thirty-nine hundred, and I believe it's what, fifty-one?
Five thirteen, ten, forty-nine hundred, and five thirteen, ten, forty-three hundred.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to, one more time, Kyle, if you could just play back, this is a budgeted expense in the city's budget, correct?
Correct.
There's an amount available, and this is consistent with the city's travel policy?
To my understanding, yeah.
Okay. I just find it a little odd that we're taking such exception to something which is budgeted and consistent with policy. If there's a policy change discussion, that happens at budget time, in my opinion.
Councilmember Dunn, I'm, I'm old hat. You know, it's, it's new to me. It's kind of like I just run from and I'm, I'm seeing something for the first time. So just clarification would be wonderful. Thank you very much for indulging.
For purposes of discussion and the motion, my last travel stint was with the state. Was with the state. Thanks. And, and all of these expenses would have been, unless we were in a budget crunch, they would have been handled and, and that would have come out of the agency and would have been budgeted. So it appears to me that this is in the scope of the agreement that we have right now, was in the budget we passed, and it doesn't create a budget for us. So I think it would create more of a hardship to have a discussion now. I think during policy time, if we're going to talk about it during the budget process, and if there's a public disclosure commission violation, then certainly we need to have that discussion, but I'm not going to vote for this.
Can I ask a clarification, Kyle? How much, I don't have the budget in front of me. How much more have we allocated for this for the rest of the year?
So for the mayor and the city administrator, budgeted amount is seven thousand dollars for the year. And so we're at roughly sixteen hundred dollars for this purchase. Council has fourteen thousand. And then just for clarification, the payment due date is March twenty fifth.
Thank you.
I have a question. I see that the registration is listed on here as well as the plane ticket, but is there any fee for the actual hotel room, the lodging, meals, all those things?
So in the documentation provided by the mayor, the registration included the hotel stay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Just remember again, this is just to look at it a little bit closer, put it back on the next one, and it's due by March twenty fifth.
No further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, there we go. Now back to the original motion.
Correct.
Thank you. No changes to the original motion. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Oh, shoot, I had one question. Can I ask it?
You can still ask your question.
Can I have an alibi? Can somebody speak to the, the one charge on here that got my attention, nine hundred and five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars? What are we getting for that again?
That is our overpass.
Thank you. Enough said. Okay, moving right along, yeah. General business action items, B one. Make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the mutual consent to extend on-call agreement with Greenleaf Landscaping. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item. Make a motion to approve the purchase of a Kubota RTV dash one, one, zero, zero, C in the amount of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second emotion.
Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item three, make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with baking concrete in an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and authorize staff to manage contingency in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight oh seven, representing fifty percent, fifteen percent of the project cost for a total authorization of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven fifty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Question, Lisa, remind me which portion of sidewalk are we doing here?
So this is that gap in sidewalk on the north side of Mission Avenue in the River District between Aladdin and Caulfield. And there's also a pavement patching that needs to be done where the sidewalk was added farther east across from Selkirk Middle School. And so, so those two components are what makes up this project.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, make a motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere TSGator in the amount of eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
One, a quick question. I'm trying to go back to my notes here real quick. This is the fourth. The fourth one that we'll have, is that correct from the notes that I had? Change, you know.
I, I don't have a number. It's probably the, yeah.
No, it's, it's, if I can, it's, I believe, eleven or twelve. The RTV, the RTV that you just approved, I believe, is number four or five. Gator, I believe, is eleven or twelve. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. I was just getting them confused. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Pro Tem, before you, you move on, there's a name, make sure to remove the name that's at the end of this.
Make a motion.
Why do we have to remove his name? Thank you. I would have stumbled on that one. Okay, I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Heidi Christensen, Robin Beckendall, Summer Darrow, Terry Peters, to the Community Engagement Commission.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Just great for the service. Thank you for the volunteers in our community.
Perfect. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. So before we get into council comments, we'd like to backtrack a little bit and hear a wonderful report from our Liberty Lake Sure &amp; Water Department.
Cue now.
It's not there.
I'm actually on, yeah. Hi. Um, you guys, can you see? It's too dark in here.
We saved you a spot earlier, but we were just cruising right along, so.
Best spot to be seen, anyway. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to report. I do, I can report that, I don't know if people are aware of this, but our water tank that's, oh geez, I can't remember the street. Over by, by the park, Rocky Hill Park, it's right up the road there. I can't remember the exact street that's on, but that had a pretty serious issue with the roof, had been compromised and was falling apart. And so we had to do some emergency repairs, empty the whole tank, and we really wanted to get it back, put back together and repaired in time for the spring season when people start using more water with irrigation and other things. And I'm happy to report that that is back online. It's been tested and repaired and put back together. So hopefully that was something that no one even knew about, but it was an issue for us and it's all good now. So we're set up there. I think that's about it. Thanks, Jen, for coming to all of our meetings. She's been really great about showing up at our meetings and giving us reports from the city as well. So, yeah, and don't forget, we still have the backflow preventer requirements for everybody. I know that's a pain. I've got a relative that I need to take care of this year because she didn't quite figure it out last year and do it right. So we've tried to be really nice and forgiving with folks, but this year, and people have got to get that done. And so be sure and start scheduling that as you start turning your sprinklers back on. For, and for safety and health, that's it. It's really an issue of keeping the water supply safe, so we don't have an issue like we had a couple of years ago. So any questions for me from anybody?
No, thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving right along, any council comments? Crickets. Okay, we'll move right along. Item number thirteen, no public hearings, thirteen resolutions, number two-two dash two-nine-nine, surplus inventory items.
Kelsey.
Yes, so we have resolution number twenty-two dash two-nine-nine, a resolution providing for the disposal of certain inventory items deemed to be surplus to the reasonably foreseeable needs of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington.
So you want a motion for that, I suppose?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two-two dash two-nine-nine, surplus inventory items as presented. Exhibit A spreadsheet and B resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good question, and I'm not sure who this question would go to. Maybe it's to Kyle. Kyle, is there any way some of these items could be used at the library?
Sorry about that. We have an ongoing list that is shared amongst city staff, and so we can certainly pose that and let me scroll through here and see if Jandy is on, if she's on and can hear us. I know that she's, she's had access to the surplus list as well. And so I guess the hope would be that, you know, we would reuse these internally before they are eventually sent to surplus.
Great, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Hearing none. Hang on, citizen comments.
Sorry. So any citizen comment?
Is this just on the resolution? Okay, hold on, hold that thought.
Todd, any citizen's a comment on the resolution? Hearing none, we'll move right along. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We have no ordinances, no emergency ordinances. Introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Yes, so mayor and council, coming up for April fifth, we have tentatively slated a financially, excuse me, a workshop on financial policy updates as well as a request for revisiting the council representation on committees. I mean, I know a couple of council members emailed interested in serving on additional committees, and so we'd like to bring that back to you on the fifth. And then for April nineteenth, tentatively discussing the future of the utility tax. One item that I was aware of after I put this together that I wanted to let you guys know about, the Library Board of Trustees and Jandy are requesting to bring a workshop to you all. I believe it's the second meeting in April, just an update on the library assessment and needs assessment over there.
Kelsey, Wendy, I had a question. I just, maybe I'm just missing it on the workshop list. Is there a scope update? I know that we had talked about that before. Bringing someone in to do a presentation.
If memory serves, yeah, no, that's a good question. We did have it on there tentatively. If memory serves me correctly, Chief Simmons was looking into some other things to go along with that. So I believe it's to be determined at this point. But he might be able to clarify that farther.
That's fine, as long as it just doesn't get removed.
That's fine, as long as it just doesn't get removed, that's still.
Yeah, and I think it may have dropped off the to be determined list, so I am adding that back in right now.
I'm sorry, Kelsey, what, what was that question again?
Just an update on when we might have a scope update. I believe you're working on some, maybe some other items to go along with that presentation or looking into that further.
Yeah, so actually I spoke with Director Rick Scott today. Finally caught up with him and spoke with him a little bit, and he's willing to, to make a city council meeting to give a little update on, on their progress and the addition of some, some new members to Liberty Lake Scope and some other things that they're working on. But he's getting ready for retirement, so we're gonna have to do it pretty quick, so.
Thank you.
I'll jump in real quick. For council consideration, I'd like to get, I would like to, I guess, reengage an ARP discussion for council consideration, hopefully for a meeting in April, if council so chooses.
For sure. Please.
Sorry, go ahead. No, that's, thank you. Two potential things we may want to move up a little bit. One is the, there's been a note on here for, gosh, ever since I joined the council about the expansion of City Hall project. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because if the expansion of City Hall includes the expansion of this chamber, that could also be used as a community space, that might go into our decisions that we make for, final decisions we make for Trailhead. So I'm wondering if we ought to set that date sometime soon to talk about that. The other thing that's on here is the. Where is it here? Well, I thought it was on here, but maybe it's not on here. Oh, the, the Hub Trail Project in Selkirk. Phil at, at the Hub emailed me this week and said they have secured the 17.5 acres that they need. So we may need to schedule some time to look at some of their design concepts that, that they're working through. I'm not sure when they're going to have those, but, but we might want to move that up a little bit as well.
Good? Any other comments? All right, moving right along, citizen comments.
I got one. Number one season, Spokane regen. If they win their two games, they come here, the whole group will do that.
Pardon me? Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council. Brian Nastness, Liberty Lake President. I just want to say that how great all the candidates did tonight for the council position. And congratulations to the council member, Tom Salberg. I know that he will represent us all very well. And just congratulations to him. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any final comments? Had enough? Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move.
Thank you, sir. Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.